All right, welcome everyone. I see we still have several people entering. The Zoom at this time. We do have a quorum of board members, so whenever our board president feels comfortable. We can perhaps call to order and then also. Begin with an introduction of board members, since we have some that are new. And then we can just talk a little bit about. Order for this evening's meeting.
Okay, we'll get going then. Well, with the quorum, we'll call the meeting to order. I'll start with the gin items and then for. Current board members will walk down the list just to for quick introduction as Tiffany mentioned. Before we get into the other matters, this meeting though is being called as a special board meeting. For the purpose of discussing the impact of COVID on procedures at Ball Charter School. And we'll get into more specifics in a moment. For now. Though. Some of our newer members. And we'll start with Mr. Jordan, if you wouldn't mind saying hello to the. To the the crew that we have here joining us today and then we'll go down from there.
Hello, everyone. I'm Terrance Jordan. I am a member of this year's board for Ball Charter, but I'm. Here representing Springfield School District 186, where I am the director of school leadership and family and community engagement. So hello, nice to meet you all. And I look forward to sharing, being a part of this board for the coming years.
Thanks, Terrence. Ms. Rita, some may be familiar with you, but. In case others don't, if you wouldn't mind saying hello.
Hello, everyone. My name's Corinne Reedus. I'm a part of this thirteen years as part of part of Ball Charter School Board. I mean, as a parent rep, I have a now third grader at Ball.
Thank you. Do we have Ms. Sisti on here? I was looking through the. All right, Jamie, go ahead. Looks like you're on mute, though, Jamie.
Okay, here I am. My name's Jamie Sisti and I'm one of the community members and. This is actually the second time I've been on the Ball Charter Board. I think it was maybe. Five, six years ago, the last time I was on the board. I've also been on the District 186 Board. And I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Actually, Ms. Weekly, I'm sorry I skipped over you. I probably should have had you be my secondhand man, so to speak. Deb, if you wouldn't mind saying hello. We got you on mute, too. You guys are killing me.
It's my first time today. Well, my name is Deborah Weekly and I am also a parent representative. I have an eighth grader, so this is my final year on the board and. Look forward to a fabulous year. Thank you and welcome to everyone.
Thank you. Just going down the list, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick Moore and I have been on the board for just a few months myself, but. Very eager to serve in this role. Very happy to have the opportunity to work with such a great community and to work with parents and students, looking forward to that as well as. Others associated with the.
I can't hear.
Oh, sorry. I just, I thought I might be on mute for a second. But nonetheless, happy to be here. So thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, and Ms. Brown.
I'm Chelsea Brown. This is my first year on the board and I am on as a community member and looking forward to the next three years on the board.
Great. All right. So moving on to some discussions and updates. Hopefully, we can touch on a few categories that people may have questions about. From COVID positives to quarantine protocol to the lessons. Planning and coordination with the school teachers and parents. I think some other categories, maybe we'll touch on our transportation issues and. And maybe other protocols in the school of how the space is being used. And we'll have an opportunity. I'm not sure if anyone signed up for. For public comment, but I would suggest maybe Tiffany that we walk through some of those things to. To avoid or maybe answer some questions before they even get asked. And certainly people are free if they still have questions or want to air any thoughts and maybe after we walk through some of that. So. Maybe Tiffany, if you can kind of walk through some of those categories and just kind of let people know roughly what it is. Questions you frankly already probably have gotten and ones you can already imagine maybe people have. So maybe we can, we can knock some of that out.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wajewski. And I want to say thank you to the board for agreeing to meet. At Ball Charter, we only meet once a month. District 186 School Board meets twice a month. And so sometimes they have the opportunity to address. School-related policies, protocols, things that are going on. More often than in a public forum than. We are able to at Ball Charter, although we're working on those same things every week. I will tell you, I'm most excited. Really just to see the number of families here. I think that says a lot about Ball Charter, but it also solidifies my reasoning for putting this on Zoom this evening. We've never had this number of parents in person, parents and families, and one thing that Zoom. Did allow this evening was for as many people to attend and participate as possible. I. I have gotten some phone calls and I also know that there's a COVID tracker that is on the school district website. And so I have an idea where our parents feel knowledgeable. Other areas where they would appreciate some more education and then just appreciate the opportunity tonight to share. What Ball Charter is doing in light of what we've seen the last three weeks at school. And I will say that. The dynamic of. Of the impact of the Delta variant has changed. The way that we were hoping that our school year would begin. I think the. Our COVID numbers are significantly higher than they were in the spring and we do, we were told that. Probably just, you know, as we were coming back and planning that we were probably looking at a more challenging time than our. Hybrid time last spring because of what those in the medical field would were projecting, we might see. It's important to me and this is an opportunity for me to share this with many families rather than one. And then I think for those who have questions. We, there will have kind of two opportunities. If you just have a question. You can choose to type that into the chat. And we'll look at those questions more towards the end. We'll be able to scroll back and make sure we cover all those. If you want to speak. We'll go ahead and use, we generally do two minutes. For guests to speak and then all I would ask is that you then put your name. In the chat. Your name in the chat will indicate that you would like to speak. If you have a question, please put that in the chat and we'll probably. Put answers to those questions at the end, just in case somewhere along the way those questions are answered as we're sharing information. So. I guess what I would say is the first, first thing I have to say is how proud I am of our staff. And teacher teams at Ball Charter because we're really going into. Man, almost like the third year, you know, we're at two and a half of just. Having to learn as we go. And having to shape school more around what is going on in the community. Medically and that's very unique. You know, one thing that I have had to, as I've looked at my own role at Ball Charter. It's been tough because a lot of my principal responsibilities have been expanded to more. Counseling, whether it's with families or students, really having to have as much information and knowledge I can about. Medical, health and safety concerns and and then also, you know, what I kind of call. Being a fortune teller because I'm also trying to predict, you know, what's. What's going to be around the corner so that we can plan. I felt like last year, I was very proud of our board of directors. Proud of our teachers in terms of how we were able to plan, actually going all the way back to like the, to the Friday, the thirteenth. When schools were originally closed and we were prepared and we were able to send our students out of the building. With computers at Friday, they did not have to return the next week. Our primary students had packets for two weeks, which gave teachers time to prepare. And so I have done my best to try to follow that model from the very beginning of this pandemic and. We've also tried to simplify. If certain things for parents such as the use of Google Classroom. It was already a platform that our students were very familiar with and I think that helped us transition better to remote learning. We've always tried to be thoughtful. About the daily schedule, whether it was shortening the day for students and paying attention to the number of hours they were on Zoom. And then as we've returned. You know, we know that our families have desired a sense of normalcy and we've also tried to create that. But one thing we do. Want to be able to do as a building is to be able to adapt and plan ahead for. You know, trends that we see going on in our community. So as we started school, we did have guidelines for distancing. The current guidelines of students are masked is three feet. So our classrooms. The teachers have submitted their floor plans and students have to be three feet apart. And they stay masked in the classrooms throughout the day. There are opportunities for mask breaks. Built into schedules, especially for our younger students, where they do get to go outside, take their masks off. And then we've also been asked to. In case there was like a immediate need in the classroom, that there is spacing for six or more feet. If there is a student who would need to. Take some type of a short break in the classroom and then be able to return to their seat. Now, the, the one thing I will say about the guidelines is I think the overall. Message is we want to keep kids in school. So there's a lot of flexibility in terms of. Well, the guidelines are a little less strict because it's, they're saying, well, if you can't do that. Essentially do the best that you can. But the overall goal is to keep students in school. And so that's the kind of the mindset with which we started. The playground area and outdoors. Again, we were instructed that that's less concerning. Students are allowed back on playground equipment. Your goal is just to try to limit grouping. And again. If we're talking about close contacts, you're identifying a student or another. Person who's within six feet of you. Unmasked for fifteen minutes or longer. And generally, we know on playgrounds, most time kids are moving. With now with older kids, middle level, they might tend to stand and congregate and and have those close contacts and some students have been able to identify students that they literally just. Stood and talked with at recess. But most of our students, especially at the age of our elementary students, they are running, they're moving, they're not standing stationary for fifteen minutes. So then the next. Area of concern was the cafeteria and for any of my parents, they know that's not a new concern because Ball Charter was. The only school, I believe, in our district who just went half days in person for hybrid and. I know now and I feel confident in that decision that I made that that helped us to keep our numbers low. Last year because of. The taking down of the mask and eating. We have twenty-five minute lunch periods. You know, that is probably the time of the greatest risk. For students in the building. We. At two-thirds capacity, which is where we would have been for hybrid. We have space in our cafeteria to fit those teams. Coming back this year with one hundred percent. Of students coming back, which our total enrollment is three hundred and ninety-six. We cannot fit all of our students in the cafeteria at six feet. So, under my leadership, we looked at. Spreading them out as much as we could and if they're not eating, getting their masks back on. And so. That's kind of how we started. As we've gone on, I have consulted with other schools. We've talked with District 186. And quite frankly, like just when you're around that many people, even if there's some good distancing taking place. It feels more crowded. We're not used to being in rooms with large groups of people like that at all. So over last week. We did everything from purchasing more tables. So that we could expand our cafeteria area and then we also have added, so while we haven't expanded the cafeteria, we. Expanded the space that students can use. And so now we have long tables all through our hallway. And outside of the library and then we have use of our plastic or Plexiglas dividers. Which I, to me, are very, very helpful. We have a number of those. They're clear. So students still can have the ability to socialize, but we have the more, you know, contained and. And truly believe that's better for. The lunchtime and and again. That decision was not based on. And I'm always really careful and Nurse Ashley can also chime in, but that, that was not based on the fact that. We were finding, we were contact tracing kids. Positive cases to lunchtime. That was done proactively so that we will not see that in the future. Nurse Ashley, is that the best way for me to?
Yeah, I agree with you. That was when I was doing my contact tracing, that was the only place that I was able to really. Trace exposed students back to. There were maybe one or two students that were exposed. Either like right at recess time or outside of school, but other than that, it was just lunch. So seeing everybody come together to.
So that was, and my point in that again was that it's not because we were, we were identifying close contacts. That was really the place where we would identify close contacts, but it was not based on. Positive cases. Happening. We wanted to be proactive about that in the future. And so that's why we made those changes at lunch. And I do think. That those are going to help, but not only will they limit like possible. The passing of the virus, but it's also going to help limit the number of close contacts. Students who may never end up testing positive but are still having to go home for ten days. So. We know that that's difficult for parents and probably the most difficult call I had to make the first week of school, you know, is that like on day three. When we were identifying some close contacts, but and again, at that time. You know, our students are. Are positive outside of the school and they show up to school with symptoms and we work with them. I will let. Nurse Ashley chime in a little bit because I do want to make sure parents are educated on if your child is symptomatic, you know, what are the steps that we follow? But before she speaks to that, I just. You guys, we have to commend Nurse Ashley for her work. She is. New to our building. Those of you who look at the minutes or attended last year, she started with us last March. And we're so fortunate at Ball Charter that we actually have a full-time nurse. And it's, that's very difficult for how large our school district is. Most schools share nurses and. So I do feel also at Ball Charter that we are addressing. You know, each and every concern and that. Nurse Ashley is, I mean, really working every single day to make sure our kids, our students are safe and that our, our staff are safe. So tho- those are the, those are the steps that logistically we've taken so far. To keep kids safe, following up with the distancing. We don't have screening anymore across the district, so we're not checking temperatures. As students come in, but if they are symptomatic, that that's part of that process. I'll go ahead and let Nurse Ashley just speak to. If a child is symptomatic, what our steps are, and then I'll come back to talk a little bit more about the academic side.
And if we can, and just because I want to make sure we get through this evening kind of efficiently, too. And the point you were just on was how parents, teachers maybe have seen things change. Right about the building over the last week, including the start of the school year. Are there any questions from board members with regards to how the school space has been utilized? Okay. So now we're about to hear. What is kind of the next category of. When there's positives or what, what, what is being done, what parents can expect, what teachers can expect. What maybe hopefully we can have help on coordination and improve upon potentially. And then maybe after that. We can touch on the academics, as you pointed out of.
Yeah, and this isn't, there's nothing to improve upon. I think what she, what we're sharing next is our COVID guidance and protocols. Communicating with health department or whatever that so that parents know what that process looks like.
So what I'm going to share are the guidelines that were put out by Illinois Department of Public Health. And Sangamon County and approved by 186. So. Anytime a student comes to me or a teacher says, hey, I'm concerned my student is exhibiting these symptoms. So I'll assess the student. I. I always look in their medical file to see if I have anything on there that says, hey, you know, this student has allergies, this student has asthma or this student has stomach problems. Something that would help me differentiate between COVID or an ongoing problem that they're already being treated for. If I don't have anything on file, then I go to my guidelines which say. There's a list of master symptoms. It includes fever, cough, runny nose, fatigue, nausea, vomiting. Runny nose. There's several others. So if any student has any one of those symptoms that's new and unexplained. Then those, that student and any siblings have to go home. This is kind of an area of some confusion that I've been explaining to staff and families, as I call them. If a child is having symptoms and they get tested and they have a negative COVID test. They and their siblings can come back immediately. That student just has to have symptoms gone for like twenty-four hours. If they don't get tested, then that student has to stay out for ten days after the start of their symptoms. And that's the same for if they do test positive for COVID. It's always ten days past the start of symptoms. So if they, and then if they don't get tested, the siblings would also have to stay home for. The ten days that their sibling is sick, but also another fourteen days in case they were to also contract whatever their sibling had. And without testing, there's no way to prove if this COVID, is this a common cold? Who knows what it could be? So if. So that's if a student's symptomatic and doesn't have COVID. If a student has COVID, then I figure out who their siblings are. Siblings have to stay home. And who their close contacts are. So we, the only time we've had close contacts was the first two weeks of school when students were three feet apart at lunch instead of six feet apart. So. This will essentially no longer be an issue because we're all distanced. So positive student, find the close contacts. I get them all rounded up in the building, distance, if there's space in the isolation room, we do it there. If there's not, we go outside or space out in the gym and then sanitize. So then those students will go home. If a student has been exposed for sure. They have to stay out for a two-week isolation. That is because symptoms could start or their student could become contagious if they contract COVID between two days. And very rarely fourteen days. Usually we say it between like in the first week. But we have to, you know, have that two-week isolation. But the health departments are also saying if a student has no symptoms at the tenth day, they can get a PCR test, which. We only accept PCR tests. We don't accept antigens. We don't accept rapids. It has to be PCR or rapid PCR. If they get tested tenth day after their exposure and it's negative, they have no symptoms, they can come back that eleventh day. So that's kind of my process whenever we have a sick student or an exposed student. Then after we. Then after we identify the positive students and the exposed students, there is a document that I send every day. Uh to the Department of Public Health and I send everything off to their contact tracers after I know who it is. Um and then I let the custodians know where we need to have special cleaning done. So we get that taken care of and um. I send out notification letters to those in the affected grade level, their parents. And I will send um a notification to staff as well.
Nurse Ashley, um and really because we're K through eight, we talk a lot about um. Um unvaccinated. Um somebody had mentioned in the chat. Uh that the quarantine is fourteen days if they're unvaccinated and ten days if vaccinated.
Um.
So um. Yep. If we have vaccinated middle-level students, is there any differences in those procedures?
So yes, there is a difference in those procedures for vaccinated students and staff. Um if you're vaccinated. There's no required isolation unless you start having symptoms, and that could be any one of those symptoms on that list, even if it's just a headache. Um so and then you're asked to wear a mask in public for two weeks. Uh post-exposure, which is what we're already doing. And then um if their family is unvaccinated and they would, you know, need to wear a mask when they're within six feet of whoever. So that's the difference.
Great. Um and one thing I'll note um that um I've had questions from from a couple of parents is about. Um whether or not our nurse diagnoses kids. Um and so and sometimes these terms kind of are used um. And maybe inaccurately, but we are not diagnosing students at school, correct?
Correct. I, as a nurse, and I am not an advanced practice nurse, I have a bachelor's degree. Um I legally cannot diagnose anyone. I can tell you what my observations are and I can tell you what to ask the doctor about, but I don't make any diagnosis.
Great. All right.
And then something else that parents can do to help me out is if your child does have an ongoing medical condition. That uh has any, that involves any of the symptoms on the COVID list. Get a note and send it to me. So hopefully I can keep them in school a little bit longer if they just have a little one of their symptoms.
Um if a child tests negative, um they can return when their symptoms go away. Because they have a cold or an allergy symptom. Um siblings, if can siblings return immediately?
Siblings can return immediately, yes.
Okay, that was in the chat as well.
And that's for a sick student, no COVID exposure and either a an alternative diagnosis or that test, so.
Before we go to some of the academics, are there any questions from board members uh for the nurse? For Nurse Ashley?
I I have one question and it's just for clarification purposes. You mentioned uh the type of test. Um to get kids back into school, but I want you to really clarify that again with the parents. Um that we only take a certain type of test. And I know you said it already, but I won't. We've been talking about testing a lot. In every aspect of of this um plan. So I want you to clarify one more time because they have. Tests that you can buy and do them yourself at home. They have the rapid test, so I want to be clear. I want us to be clear to parents what type of test we accept.
The only test that we accept is a PCR. So that's like Paul, Charlie, Robert. That's the only one that we'll accept. So.
Thank you.
How quickly do they get their results with a PCR test?
So. When the community is not overwhelmed, it's usually turn twenty-four hour turnaround time and sometimes they even have the quick PCRs. Um but right now it's like a two-day turnaround, one to two days.
Okay, and where does that guidance come from? How come we cannot accept other tests?
That comes straight from IDPH and that's because the um antigen tests it don't. That could capture like an older case that you might not be symptomatic for. Or um the rapid tests or the binax tests have a larger error rate for negatives. So there there are more false negatives. So that's why we like the PCRs. So we. We have a much clearer idea of who's sick and who's not.
Great. Um and I'm just going through some of the questions in the chat for you two. Why is there a difference between vaccinated students and non-vaccinated students?
So the vaccinated students, they're, they have immunity to COVID through the vaccine. So there is a very, very low chance that they will actually get an infection and become sick or spread it to somebody. So. The the it's like a two-ish percent chance that they're going to get sick and spread it. That's why there's a difference. Unvaccinated students have no protection at all. Um if they've had COVID before, eventually those antibodies drop off and they can become contagious again. So that's why, that's why we have to be more careful.
Great. Here's another. And then if there's a board member with a question, feel free to chime in. I'm I'm moving through the chat. Um I'll read this out loud, wanting to make sure I'm understanding. If I'm called and told my child has been exposed to a positive case at the school. They automatically have to be out for ten days or can they get tested and returned sooner? This would be an unvaccinated student.
So an unvaccinated student with a confirmed exposure cannot come back early. They they have to be out for at least the ten days.
And then a sibling of that exposed child, so they'd be a second.
Yeah, so when that student goes home for exposure, they should be isolating. They should be six feet away from family members at all times. If they're going to be moving around the house like to the bathroom or something, they should be wearing a mask. Anytime you're within six feet of each other, all parties need to be wearing masks. Ideally, that person could have their own bedroom and bathroom. That's not always possible. Um so I just encourage people to keep things clean. So um but if the sibling.
Right.
Yeah.
Have a close contact.
If you're a sibling of a close contact, they were not exposed. So I only contact people. Who were exposed for sure that that are definitely positive that were around that person. So that would be considered a secondary contact if it was the sibling of the person exposed, so.
Great. Um. And I I we may not speak to all of this. Somebody mentioned natural immunity. Again, because we receive our guidance. As a public school and we are a public charter school through the Department of Public Health and the CDC. Um we actually utilize that guidance. And if you guys followed the mask mandate. Um there were schools that were actually fined for not adhering. Um to the governor's guidance. So we also wanted to make sure that we protect our school in a lot of those decisions. Um the next question, what is required to update our child's medical history that they have on file at the school?
So if you go to SPS one eighty-six homepage, you will go to um. Services, the services, health services, forms. And there's a physical form, um or you could just do a simple doctor's note that says. You know, John Doe has a history of allergies and may have these symptoms because of it. Um so anything from a doctor's office that says your child's condition, the symptoms. Or a medication that they take at home and the side effects that might cause some of these symptoms. I'll accept those.
Okay, um and I don't know if Mr. Jordan has some information. As principals, we've started to meet and talk a little bit about saliva testing. Um for us, that is something that would be provided through District one eighty-six, and I don't have a current update. On saliva testing. Mr. Jordan, do you have any information in regard to that?
I I don't have a lot of information. I know that um for parents, I do want to say this too, that these guidelines. Apply to staff as well. So we have to follow these same guidelines. And the reason I say that is because the governor came out with an executive order mandate that um. That all um educators get, or people who work in schools. You get vaccinated or get weekly testing. Now, we were already in the process in Springfield School District one eighty-six to provide that testing. And we're still planning to do that, but I can't specifically say when exactly that's going to roll out.
So at this point, that is to be determined. I don't have a specific date. I do know it is uh part of the plan. So right now the PCR test is the only option at our school. Um. Okay.
I believe the test at UIS is a PCR. It is for asymptomatic um individuals or those that are early on in the disease.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I'm sorry, um superintendent, but um I'm not sure if if. When kids register for Ball, that they have to complete the form saying that they are uh willing to allow their students to. Take that test when it becomes available or not. But that's something that we may want to consider if you weren't on, if you, if that wasn't the option. I know it's Springfield School District. Every parent who registered had that option to let us know. That we could test their child at school if they had some symptoms. And if those, if the test came back negative. They still had to go home, but we knew that we didn't have to do a whole lot of contact tracing and and all that at that point.
We also utilize the district's registration system, so that question was on there for Ball Charter families.
So so if you um opted out of that, you may want to go back in and um update that information. Let so that we'll know once that test becomes available, that you are okay with us testing. Um your child at school.
All right, is there anything else from the board members um before we move on to? The academic side of of what we can expect to see when when there are positive close contacts, et cetera. Um yeah, as a reminder, the board has authorized the administration to make exclusion decision, COVID-related exclusion decisions. Um that are consistent with the state guidances. So. Generally speaking, um there is always going to be some connection to an executive order. Um or Department of Public Health guidance, um which is what the board has authorized. Uh is there anything else from board members for Nurse Ashley before we move back to Principal Williams for? Maybe walking through some of the things that were implemented and evolved over the last week in terms of. How parents and teachers can coordinate when these situations arise. If not, then Ms. Williams, Principal Williams, go go ahead.
And and I do see the chat is important. There are comments in the chat and there are questions in the chat. And so. Um I think to Nurse Ashley has addressed the questions. Other comments about legalities or. Um. I don't know, some some beliefs or opinions. Um to me, I want tonight to make sure that it's informative in terms of what we can speak to. Um at Ball Charter. I think the chat is still important because unlike a regular board meeting, you can still place your comment there. Um so that the public can read it. There was one comment about um you still didn't know. You could take the um when we, when District one eighty-six provides the test. Um whether or not you would be sent home, since that test is not in place right now. Um I will answer that question and make sure that we are um notify parents of those exact procedures when it becomes. Um a possibility, but for right now. Uh if you have comments that you want to share as opposed to questions, then I would invite you to take your two minutes to speak. Um after I give this final piece. We welcome anybody to do that.
I'm glad you addressed that um um Principal Wade was because that 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 was the plan when the. Initially, when the test was um was discussed and that could change and it could have already changed. So. Once we have that in place, then we'll know the exact guidelines about around that. So thank you for addressing that.
There was one comment or one question that I wanted to address before we move on. Um someone asked about natural immunity. Um so. Where our immune system works, there are some like memory cells that remember how to fight the virus. Um so if somebody contracts COVID for about ninety days and they're and sometimes longer depending on the person. Um they do have some antibodies and that's why they test positive still um if they get another test. Um so ninety days after a positive test, um. Ask for the health department. If someone has a COVID exposure within that ninety-day window, they don't have to go back home. So that I will say that.
Okay. Um so as we came back, we tried to kind of um. Um look at the district's plan for um students that were going to be out. Um who tested positive or identified as a close contact. We realized that generally this would be up to ten days. It could be up to twenty-four days. Um I've, in my opinion, grades uh two through eight. Um had have already had a lot of practice with um Google Classroom all throughout remote. And hybrid learning. Again, those second graders are coming up from primary, so they wouldn't have as much practice. But in general, um grades two through eight, those students are capable of um navigating. Through lessons through Google Classroom. We also invested in Admentum Courseware, which Admentum offers. Both Study Island and Courseware, um to which if perhaps we had a student that was out for. Say twenty-four days, um we might just enroll them in a course. Um that meets the identified standards from their teacher. Um because it would include um instructional videos and items like that. Um in other cases, we thought Study Island might still be helpful because our younger students, again, just have some familiarity with Study Island. And the idea of um earning ribbons. Um we felt like students would understand what it took. To reach a level of proficiency. Um now I will say that our numbers are higher than what I anticipated. Um because we're not sending kids home with like brand-new Chromebooks that we bought. We're trying to keep those intact. Uh just trying to make a good budget decision. We have several surplus Chromebooks and so um. Our our plan was to, and what we've been doing is providing students those uh surplus Chromebooks. Again, to keep the new newer um devices intact in the classrooms. Um but I'll be honest with the numbers, it's it's extra work um. Doing that, but right now it's manageable. Um and then the teacher. Um what I shared with the teachers is I would still give the teachers some freedom to determine like um. You know, this will be a good time for me to check in with the student. This subject, the student should feel comfortable logging on to. Um Google Classroom. Uh however, this subject, um let's put them on some Admentum Courseware. For our kindergartners and first graders, you know, uh we had some talk with that team and. You know, if they're only going, if they're going home for ten days or less, uh we can, at that age, it'd be easier for us to put some packets. Uh together. So um we just had some flexibility. Again, being a K through eight building is very unique. Um where I struggle even with our plan a little bit is you you guys know, it's been very important for me for our kids to stay connected. I'm, you know, as much as I just dislike COVID, you know, one of the my biggest pet peeves is just that. You know, we don't see kids and communicating by email or through a Google Hangout chat isn't the same as having them in person. Uh but I do think that our teachers recognize um, they recognize that piece. And I feel like after Labor Day. Um we will uh we will always make sure there's a component in which the. Students have some um though it be virtual, face-to-face contact daily. though it be virtual, face-to-face contact daily. We've gone from just offering an asynchronous opportunity like Google Classroom or some of our online platforms to uh building a plan for having a uh remote staff contact at each grade level. We have uh classroom aides at the kindergarten, first grade level. We've got classroom aides at the second, third grade level. We've got um some teachers that have a little bit more time, uh have some less time with students in terms of seat time that we could build that in. And then one part of that that has kind of inspired the rest of the plan is that we've been able to solidify one of our retired teachers who is skilled in remote learning and is willing to take on all six through eight um remote students. They would be a paid substitute. They would be available the eight hours a day during the school day, but would actually be able to schedule time to check in with students in the morning and in the afternoon and then be available for questions so that they have somebody that they can talk to. We obviously can't have um our General Teachers' Day um interrupted in that manner because they're teaching the rest of the class. Um and so right now, I think having that remote staff member is our best option. So we're still finalizing that through the end of this week, but we believe that that's a plan that we can pick up starting after Labor Day. And we think to, that it's going to be more effective than just sending them home with um asynchronous work for um those ten days. Another thing that I've, I've noticed and wanted to update is that uh my initial thought, again, kind of based off of numbers from March to May, is that students that are only going home for two days or who are waiting for twenty-four to forty-eight hours for a test, don't need to take home technology. You know, several of those kids aren't feeling good. If you went home sick, we would not have an expectation that you had to do your homework. If you were only gone for two days in the past, you would come back to school and make that work up. But at this point, um we um again, be, uh beginning that implementation as soon as possible, but I would, I think it would be more beneficial for all students to, if they go home, take a device. It'll save you a trip from having to come back. Um I know it would help Nurse Ashley a lot. Uh she sent a note out this week saying, you know, if, if the kid goes home, let's get them home with as much as possible. Um and then if they come back um two to three days later, our technology specialist has a method for cleaning those devices before they're reissued and students can then return to the classroom. But the big, the biggest takeaway is that at Ball Charter, we're really going to make a strong effort to not just send your child home with asynchronous work, but to also provide a remote contact beyond your classroom teacher who has time during the day to um remotely check in with your student and try to keep them as connected to the school as possible in their absence.
Any questions of board members with regards to what Principal Williams shared? Certainly, that's good news. I know that at the last board meeting, um which was in person and lightly attended, this was certainly discussed. And the six through eight planning was well on its way. Um I know with K through five, that was still evolving, but oh, you know, it's, it's good to hear. We all recognize the importance of access to, to someone. Any questions of board members?
As a parent of two children still in school right now, I have concerns with COVID. Um I'm a little bit extreme, so um I try to be mindful of the things that I say. But as we look at that return to learn plan, it looks really good on paper.
Ms. Reedus, we may have.
Turn our video off. Sometimes that helps with the audio quality because we didn't.
Yeah, the, when you mention your concerns, Grant, if you wouldn't mind, yep, go ahead and repeat that.
Okay.
Looks good on paper. That was.
You know how that plays out. But um there's, it takes time to get these things rolling. I, I also touched on uh towards the end of the school year, I felt more comfortable with my kids returning to school this school year because numbers were lower. But now we're seeing our, 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 our status in red. Numbers are high. At what point do we at what point do things, do we go back to keeping um our kids safe like we were doing last year? And I know I kind of touched on it last meeting about metrics and discovered that we realized that we had, you know, with the district's plan. But at what point does that happen? Is my question, I guess.
And are you speaking really as a board? When do you start looking at metrics again or, or some other measure to determine?
Last school year, yeah.
Well, I think tonight is for discussion. I really, and I've heard varying opinions from parents and encourage them to share their opinions. Right now, we I think it's going to be a continuing discussion at, at every board meeting, but I do know board members are watching those numbers. Where we've, we've seen, you know, one school in the area, even though there's some extenuating uh circumstances with that, decide to go remote. We've seen a school indicator start two weeks later um than originally planned. What I would say is we don't have any guidance from our governor or our uh state officials, our state superintendent to look at other models. I will say at Ball Charter, as teacher teams and in our instructional leadership team, and I've already asked of teacher teams to make sure that we have a plan for hybrid and remote, not saying that I'm pushing for either one of those. I just when things happen at the state or when the board calls upon me as a school leader to put that in place, I will let you know that we're already, we will already have a plan. But really, that is um, I would say state-driven, district-driven, and certainly board-driven.
And maybe the only thing I'll add, since we have so many people on, on this, is the last time we voted as a board on, on anything, we modified the return to school plan to not have an automatic trigger to go back to remote. We never rescinded that. And that, in short, it authorized the administration to make remote decision-making, if at all, based off of COVID-related exclusions to students and staff. Inherently, that does, I, I would, I would say as a board member, I, I think that takes into account at least some of the reality of whether things are escalating or how things are escalating. Outbreaks, clusters are, are the word now that everybody seems to be using and, and paying attention to more rather than exclusions was the word last year or last school year. But I, I would suggest that right now as board, that's what, that's what we've authorized. And, you know, Grant, I, I think the next board meeting, we're gonna have to walk through, you know, some of those whatever metrics we think are relevant. A lot of them are still the same with regards to community spread, cases per thousand, new per youth, new per popular, you know, community. Positive percentage. Those are all still on the IDPH website for the school page. And then out, outbreaks are, are maybe the one, new one that seems to be getting talked about more. But I would suggest we, we kind of walk through that at the next board meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, those are some things that we can discuss as a board, but I caution us on on how we address those and how we discuss those because we're following the, the guidance from the Illinois Department of, of the, the Illinois State Board of Education. And the governor's mandate and the expectation is that we um have kids in school as much as possible and they haven't given us an option for going back to remote. But so we can plan in case that does happen. But um honestly, we can't make those decisions unless, uh if we do, we'll be violating the, the the guidance from um Illinois State Board of Education.
And also what we will see now um is students coming back in the school. So somebody did mention in the chat, you know, the high percentage of students that are out. And I think as you build a hybrid plan, especially for the sake of the teachers trying to be, can, provide consistent instruction. You know, you, you're, the parents in the past had, you know, a commitment of you, you need to stay hybrid for the semester. Or, you know, if you decide to change your mind at Ball Charter, we, we have limited enrollment. So we were finding a way that, okay, if you want to come back in, we can get you back in starting the next week or something like that. But when kids are only going out for two school weeks at a time, that does, that complicates the matter. And I, and I also, you know, want to make sure that I always bring perspective or opinions of uh the teachers to the table in terms of um, you know, providing consistent instruction. We had kids out like the first week, and I know a lot of parents were, you know, not wanting their kids behind. A lot of what was going on the first week really was procedural. Getting kids used to the classroom and understanding the rules of, of the classroom and, you know, literally just how to log in to different programs. Uh but now we're starting in, to get into the meat of our curriculum. And, and so we, we want to take uh into consideration all, you know, those uh instructional um procedures from staff and then what the needs are for parents with students at home.
Okay, so we've now walked through spacing utilization and how it's changed. The testing, tracing and communications with parents with regards to positive cases in close contacts as well as the related habit and the communications and planning and frankly, continued evolution of, of how that coordination works. Uh is there anything else? Are there any questions on any of those three areas from board members? From the administration or Nurse Ashley?
In the interest of time, if we don't have questions from board members, then I think the next step would be to open it up for two-minute uh discussion from our guests. If um any of them want to share out, and then we've been trying to cover as much of the questions as possible, but then if we possibly missed any, um I'll, I can go through during that time and answer questions.
All right. It looks like we have um at least one. Um if you wouldn't mind putting your names in the chat. And I won't be overly harsh, but if, if possible, try to, to keep the two minutes and I'll just simply remind those speaking when, when you're getting close to that, that time to, to wrap it up. Mr. Kelly, if you wouldn't mind, uh unmute yourself and proceeding.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have several concerns, um not just from the level of the COVID exposure that we're seeing in the school, but uh currently my, uh three quarters of my family is fighting COVID nineteen and in quarantine. It makes it hard to uh continue working uh from home and to make sure that my son, who is also now tested positive as of today, uh is also able to do his schoolwork. It, it almost feels like we're fighting a losing battle. Yeah, we're back in school, which helps. But with all the, the kids that are missing school, we need another option. We need, we need to be doing better. And we can't say that it's because the state doesn't allow it or anything like that. There are schools all over our state that have already had to move to a hybrid learning. And, and they did it almost immediately. As soon as they saw case numbers rising, they, they made the jump to do that. Yeah, we're dragging our feet and saying, well, the State Board of Education isn't allowing it. Well, that's, that's obviously not true because other, other schools are doing it. And at some point, we need to do what's best for our children. Our children are our future. We're here to not only give them an education, but to keep them safe. At what point do we say enough is enough? I understand it, it, it's best to have them in school, but at some point, we need, we need to be doing something else. The case numbers are higher now than when we initially sent our kids home. And yet, here we are still. Let's continue with the plan of keeping our kids in school no matter what the cost. Our contact tracing isn't good enough. We can't say that, well, they're spaced three feet apart per CDC guidelines with wearing masks. Yeah, that's true. That's what the CDC guideline is, but we know that masks are still only seventy to eighty percent effective at, at keeping the virus at bay. So we know there will still be community transmission inside the classrooms. This is all out on the CDC website. It's all there. We know these things are there, and yet we're ignoring them in our contact tracing. When we get our emails.
Mister Kelly, if you wouldn't mind just getting, getting, if you wouldn't mind wrapping up some of your thoughts.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
When we get, when we get these emails from the, uh from, from the school nurse, which she is doing a wonderful job, they're not giving us enough information. I understand we can't release the names of the students, but we need to know what classrooms they're in. Who, we need to know more information. The students aren't, aren't secluded into small areas. They're in the cafeteria, they're in the gym. We need more. And I'll, I'll conclude it there.
Thank you, Mister Kelly. Ms. Nichols? If you wouldn't mind unmuting yourselves and.
I got it. Thank you. Um, first of all, I think this school is doing a great job. I know that this is the, like, what, third week? We're barely getting started. And our kids have been at home. I have six children, all of which in the district, all age nine and under. And they have been desperately wanting to get back, especially my older ones that have been in school. I have a second grader that has never had a full year of school yet. And he is nowhere near where my daughters were. And it is not for lack of intelligence. He tested at the top. They asked him to go to aisles and he is still way below where my daughters were entering second grade because he has never had a year in. And it's the same thing when we, I worked at the school district many years ago. And when I first started, I got sick all the time. Our kids have been home predominantly for over a year and a half. They, of course, they were not around as many people. They were not exposed to these germs. We are just now putting them back in to all these germs. First of all, fifteen percent of the school does not have COVID. They, a lot of those kids aren't even sick. They're just home as a precaution because they were exposed to other kids. So we have to remember, my whole family had COVID. And I had it the worst. I don't, I had, last year had a very severe illness that put me in the hospital for many weeks. I had a rare disease called tularemia and got sepsis. So I am extremely susceptible, apparently, and, but yet I still would choose to have my kids in school learning. There is nothing that compares to in-person learning and in-person with your peers. Their social development and their emotional development. And all of my kids are between the ages of three and nine, and I have three with like severe autoimmune, they're foster. They've been with us for a long time. We're in the process of adopting, but they have asthma and they have allergies and they have aspiration stuff and different things. So, and at first I was very concerned, but we have now lived through it. And we live to tell about it. And it is taking one day at a time. And just looking at this, I think if we don't want our kids in school, it is our right not to put them in school. As parents, we can pull them, we can put them. Um, we can pull them, we can put them somewhere else, we can do something else. This is our choice to have them here. And we want our teachers, a lot of us want our teachers.
And Ms. Nichols, if you wouldn't mind, uh, kind of wrapping up some of your thoughts.
I'm sure there's more, but I rarely speak up and, um. This is just very concerning. I actually wrote, um. Principal Williams a message earlier today in Messenger, just, you know, thanking and, um, telling her how grateful our kids are to be. Back with their friends, back with their teachers. And. You can't just shut it all down because if you don't want your child in the school, pull them out.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Uh, looking at the, um, looks like we have one more, Ms. Ms. Crook, if you wouldn't mind unmuting and proceeding.
Hi, um, thanks, everybody. I think I have a short, just similar comments where, um, our kids are very extremely happy to be back in school. Um, they've had to stay home because of a cold, unfortunately, for about four days. Then they went back, then I kept them home because I was frantic because of the numbers going up. So I think it's really hard for parents right now. I mean, I don't want to keep my kids home, I'll have to quit my job. That's not an option for me. And I just hope that maybe I would ask for a little bit more transparency if possible. Um, it is kind of scary to get emails about upper primary, but I'm like, is that in my kid's classroom? Is it not? How do I make a safe choice for what I would like to do without knowing? That would be helpful. Um, I'm very hopeful that maybe with vaccination of younger kids, eventually, hopefully by the next year, that we will have to put some of this behind us. But overall, I think the school's doing a great job. There's not a great answer. I feel like every morning I wake up and don't know what to do with my kids, but I'm thankful they're there and I hope they can stay in a safe way.
Thank you. And I think I can speak to, if there are more things, um, if, if room numbers is, um. Is what we're instructed to put on there. And again, we receive kind of elementary plus middle level guidance sometimes. So we were, at that time, we were told, um, grade level. But I don't have any problem looking at that because quite frankly, um, our nurse will respond to, um, you know, a parent. Who, who is, um, of a close contact and make sure that they have all of the information that they need. So for those desiring more transparency, I will, I will double check on that, uh, first thing in the morning. And make sure we're providing all the required information on those letters. That's no problem.
Thank you for Principal Williams. I, um. I, I made a note, it was either Beth or Levi of the Vincents and then maybe wrapping up with Ms. Jones. Uh, so Vincents, sorry, I, um, if you wouldn't mind unmuting and, and proceeding.
Um, hi, um, I'm a mom.
Or Ms. Jones, I'm sorry, I didn't, I just wanted to, to give the Vincents one, uh, I, I thought I made a note to, of, that they had. Proceed and then, and then Ms. Jones will go to you next.
Oh.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to say you guys are doing a great job and I do believe every one of you on the board and Principal Williams are. Doing, uh, the absolute best you guys can and I can see that in your hard work and it shows and, uh. I didn't get to express that the last meeting, um, but I do appreciate you guys. I just wanted to speak up, um, and say that, uh. We, uh, we are totally for getting the kids in school as much as possible. They're doing so much better. Our oldest son is doing so much better in school. And, uh, his grades are showing it. Um, all of them are happy to be there and we do believe that plays a part in their overall health. And there's a lot of aspects to health, um, and being in school, being with people. And, uh, having, um, a positive outlook and hope. Having hope actually, uh, increases our health as well and so, uh, thank you for trying to keep our kids in school. And, uh. I just wanted to say that, uh, we need, um, we need God's help in all of this and I wanted to offer a prayer. With my final minute and so, uh, Father God, I just ask that you would give this school board wisdom. And continue to bless this school, bless our community. And, uh, give us wisdom and where to go and we pray for your protection for all of our health. And, uh, we stand against COVID, we stand against all these viruses and we come against all of this fear. And we believe that your protection will be upon us. And we have a hope, Lord God, that you will shine your light upon this school and every student and family in our community in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Ms. Jones, if you wouldn't mind unmuting and proceeding.
Hi, um, I'm a mom of five and I'm also an essential worker. Throughout this pandemic, I've worked the whole thing, probably 14 hour days. Um, and I had five children on remote. Um, and I chose to have them remote even when the hybrid started. Um, and I would continue to have them on remote, but my children would, they love being in school. They are happy to be in school. My, um, teenager said that she doesn't think that she would make it her senior year if she wasn't in school this year. So she's thrilled to be back and my, my twins are in middle school and they're ecstatic because they're not in uniform anymore. And my kindergarten and fourth grader are, they are ecstatic. They are in school because they're not in uniforms and, I mean, my house is so much toy where. I'm probably the one that's bringing them down because I don't want them to be there. So, you know, sometimes us as parents, we probably need to sit back and be quiet and listen to our kids because they will lead the way. And the Bible tells us that. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Well, with that, um, we've certainly had a healthy discussion and sharing of information over the last. Hour, um. We'll have future board meetings, um, and unfortunately, this will still be a topic that we're going to be continuing to talk about. And Ms. Reedus, I know that you'll be wanting to get into some of those topics at the next board meeting, um, which I'm sure we will have on the agenda. But with that, um, unless there's anything else from any other board member.
The only, there were two quick questions, I'm sorry, I did say there'd be time just in case we missed any. Is that we are finalizing the remote plan. I know at least for middle level, we will have from, um, our remote teacher ready next week. I don't think it will take, uh, much more planning to make sure we have remote support K through, uh, five. Again, um, I'm not committing to all day support at all levels. Um, and when we meet again, uh, does anybody have the date of the next board meeting? In front of them?
Last Monday of the month, right?
Yeah, and so, um, but then, yeah, so we, we hope that even just within two weeks or so, we'll be able to offer more. I don't know, board members, I think maybe, um, again, coming from the chat, you may want to consider, uh, Zoom. Because of, uh, the increased attendance, so that might be a topic for discussion. And somebody else asked if they pull their child, won't that violate truancy? And yes, if you continue to be enrolled and then just don't send your child to school. Um, our attendance records go, um, to the regional office. I, I had people contact me last year, it's not Ms. Williams. Like calling truancy, certainly I can do that, but our daily records go over there, um, automatically through our info system. And so, um, in a normal school year, 10 absences, um, would kind of put you on the radar for truancy. Um, with COVID, um, it, it's many, many, many more than that. Generally because they take into consideration, um, quarantining and such. But, um, I think what the, uh, parent who mentioned, um. Having a choice, um, which certainly, uh, being a charter school, we support, um, you know, being. Parents actively using their ability to choose, um, but you would have to refer to a homeschooling program. Or, um, some other option. Even when a child leaves Ball Charter, we make sure, we have to do our due diligence to make sure they're enrolled. In a homeschool program or another public or private school. Um, and then. And I don't know, Nurse Ashley, um. The question is, um, do we have any data that indicates, um, that COVID was contracted at school?
I don't know how.
So, when I do my contact tracing, um, I, I go through everybody that I'm aware of that the student was around. I speak with the parents, I find out, you know, other possible areas of exposure. And then everything goes off to the health department. And they're the people who give the final decision on where cases were fought, where cases were contracted. They dig even deeper than I do. And they're the ones that have the final say and I have not heard anything from them. About if anything was definitely contracted at school, so.
Okay, that answers those questions. Again, thank you, parents. I, I hope. I hope you see our efforts to be as transparent as possible and I hope this has helped educate, um, everybody on the process at school. I, I think so many of you that have shown your support, it's not easy. Um, we're just, we're used to being, you know, institutions of education and, and health and safety now is, um, such a high priority. With COVID and, and that unique situation. We didn't talk about it, but I, busing has been challenging for many of our families. I have to definitely thank Ms. Marquis and Mrs. Bora in the office, um, because we've. We've been trying to help parents as much as possible. So there's a couple of things that we work, we've worked through together as stakeholders. And all of it's not directly in my hands to control or even directly in the hands of the board. But I just want to say, you know, as we move forward, um. You know, thank a teacher. Um, I know they were hoping for better this year, um, but they've been working tirelessly for two plus years in, in a really unique way. And, um, and then again, just thank you to all of you who advocate for your child. We welcome that. Thank to, thank you, those of you who have added ways to educate ourselves in the comments. Um, sharing your thoughts publicly. And, uh, we will just continue to try to keep these lines of communication open since I know our goal collectively is to do what's best for all children. Thank you.
Thanks for everybody's time. Can I get a motion second for adjournment from, uh, two board members?
I'll move.
Then moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Have a good evening, everyone.
Join PTO, first meeting next Tuesday. Join our PTO. Information on the website and the Facebook page. Join PTO. I see many of my teachers here tonight. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Amanda.
Principal Williams, I just want to say thank you so much for all your work on this too.
Hello.
Thank you.
I'm about to get off now.